This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the April 3rd, 2024 South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We have all commissioners present this evening. At this time, I would ask you to all rise, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to announce that our public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners meetings are electronically recorded, filed, and posted to the township website for public access. At this time, I'll ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to please review our public virtual meeting rules.
Thank you. The public virtual meeting rules are as follows. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of the agenda. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized, then move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid any background noise that may cause interference during the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. The staff member monitoring go-to meeting will then unmute your microphone and you will have the opportunity to comment or ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I'd also like to announce that the Board of Commissioners met an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss legal and personnel matters. Agenda item four is courtesy of the floor. This is opportunity for any member of the public to approach the board on any non-agenda items. Is there anyone present this evening or online who'd like to address the board? Hearing and seeing none, I'll move on to agenda item five. Our meeting minutes from March 20th, 2024 have been distributed to the board in advance for your review. Are there any comments or questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, five to zero. Then item six A, ordinances. Motion to adopt an ordinance of the Township of South Whitehall, County of Lehigh, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending Part Two, General Legislation, Chapter 336, Vehicles and Traffic, Article Three, Restrictions on Size, Weight, and Type of Vehicle and Load of the Codified Ordinances of South Whitehall Township to amend Section 336-31, Truck Traffic Restricted on Certain Streets, to provide for a truck traffic prohibition on Ridgeview Drive between Walbert Avenue and Huckleberry Road, and to provide for a repealer clause, Retention of Rights to Enforce Severability Clause, and an effective date. I'll ask Township Manager Tom Petrucci to please present this agenda item.
Thank you. The Township Engineer previously determined that it would be appropriate to restrict truck traffic on Ridgeview Drive from Walbert Avenue to Huckleberry Road. But an ordinance is required to implement this truck traffic restriction. The ordinance has been approved for advertisement by the Board of Commissioners. It was advertised in the March 21st issue of the Parkland Press. It was also sent to the Lehigh County Department of Law on March 11th. And basically, the ordinance has been reviewed by the Township Solicitor and also gone through several reviews at the public meetings of the Board of Commissioners. So if the board is inclined to adopt the ordinance, it is ready for adoption. Also additionally, all required signage as identified in the Township Engineer letter dated January 18th, 2024 has been ordered and received at the township. So if the board adopts the ordinance, it would be ready to be implemented immediately. And we would notify the Police Department so that they can enforce the ordinance as well. So with that, I would seek a motion to adopt and enact the ordinance.
Thank you, Tom. I'll open up to the board. If there are any comments or questions on this ordinance. Do I have a motion to adopt said ordinance?
Motion.
Motion a second. Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Nothing online? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Moving on to agenda item seven, resolution. Seven A, we have approval of resolutions, revised cost-sharing agreements for sewer and water for State Route 309, Section 12M. Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the Township Manager to execute a utility reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for the Highway Improvement Project of State Route 309, Section 12M, Water. I'll ask Township Manager Tom Petrucci to present this agenda item.
Thank you. So as part of the 309, Section 12M interchange highway improvement project, the Township Board of Commissioners previously approved cost-sharing agreements relative to the relocation of water and sewer utilities for the township. The revised agreement is now necessary for the following two reasons. So reconciliation of betterment costs that are outside of the scope of the PennDOT work and legal purview of PennDOT for the relocation of water utilities on Beverly Drive, and then also for an extension of the deadline for a final signed agreement to the date of May 16th, 2024, for both water and sewer. So the first agreement would be for water, which would be for the betterment, as well as the deadline extension, and the second's for the sewer, which only encompasses the deadline extension. So just to give a little more information on the betterment work for the water, it includes the abandonment of an existing two-inch galvanized water main serving three properties from Beverly Drive. The two-inch main will be abandoned at the eight-inch main on Beverly Drive by open cut excavation and capping the two-inch main. Three new one-inch copper water services would be installed from the north side of Tillman Street to serve each property and connect to the existing service locations on the south side of Tillman Street. The work is outside of the PennDOT limit of work for the project and was requested by the Township for purposes related to efficiency and long-term operation and maintenance of the line at this location. Both the agreements remain at their same fixed percentages, which would be 75% from PennDOT and 25% for the township. So the resolutions authorize the Township Manager to execute the agreements on behalf of the township. Please note that this project would not be budgeted probably until '26 or '27, and possibly even 2028, depending on how the work goes.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Are there any comments or questions from the board on this resolution?
So just Herb, I'm sure going from a two-inch to a one-inch, for those, they'll still get appropriate water flows. I take it that's all been addressed.
Well, what's going to be changed is from the two-inch line, it's a two-inch main right there. And on the other side of Tillman, the two-inch main, let me clarify, is an old galvanized main. The eight-inch line that is on the north side of Tillman Street is an eight-inch ductile iron pipe. So they'll actually have more water with the same service size of one inch that they all currently have.
Okay.
Except for the one strip mall that's there comes in off a two-inch service, but that will remain a two-inch service also.
Okay. Just want to make sure that when we see it from a two-inch to a one-inch, they'll still get the same water pressure.
They'll actually have more pressure, probably.
During this process, will there be an interruption of water service?
The only, there will be a slight interruption. It won't be days or anything. What would have to happen is they have to tap the eight-inch main on the north side, bring the copper across underneath Tillman Street, which will go in a sleeve. So if the service line ever leaks, Public Works can slip the lines out and slip a new one in. So it will just be a matter of them putting the line in, disconnecting the old line, and tying the new line right back in. So it's going to be very minimal, the interruptions.
And Herb, are Township Public Works staff the ones that will be doing the actual work, or is this PennDOT?
This will be incorporated into the PennDOT work that's going to be doing it. In Public Works, we really don't get involved in the main lays. We don't have the equipment or the guys to do that. So the other reason we incorporated right in is it's not going to be a cluster out there where they're working right next to us while we're right there also, and we're in everybody's way on top of each other. So it is, they're already going to be there. We're not, it's going to be a lot cheaper for us just to have them put these lines across Tillman Street and all that.
Understood. Thank you. Any other board questions? Any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve adoption of said resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. The second part of this resolution is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the Township Manager to execute a utility reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for the Highway Improvement Project of State Route 309, Section 12M, Sewer. And Tom, if you'd present?
Yes, it's the same resolution as Water, just all this one does is extend the deadline. So what would need to happen here is just we initial off on the deadline change to May 16th, 2024.
Very good. Are there any comments from the board on this? Any public comment? Do I have a motion to approve adoption of said resolution?
Motion.
Motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Then item seven B, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township to submit an application to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, 2024 Recycling Development and Implementation Grant Program, under Section 902 of the Municipal Waste Planning, Recycling, and Waste Reduction Act. I'll ask our Director of Operations, Herb Bender, to please present.
Thank you. South Whitehall Township Administration, along with the Public Works Department, would like to move forward with applying for the 902 grant. This grant can be applied for every two years. We applied in 2022 and we are awarded $316,575. And in 2024, we would like to apply for $190,830 to purchase an Olympian Pro Vacuum Trailer. The grant will cover 90%, which is $171,747, and the township would match portion is 10% for $19,083. Currently, we use a trackless unit with a leaf head attachment, which requires a minimum of four employees. And with this new leaf vacuum trailer, it would only require two employees. This will also lower our maintenance costs due to not having to rebuild the leaf heads every year. As you can see on the memo, those are the costs for rebuilding the leaf heads, or if the leaf heads break during the leaf season, which are, it's a pretty expensive cost to the township. So these, just to be clear, though, if we apply for this grant, we get it, these leaf heads would not leave the fleet. They would stay as a backup reserve in case we lost another machine, so we would not fall behind on the leaf collection. But if we don't use them, we don't need to reservice them and rebuild them every year then. So the action we're looking for is administration is looking for approval of a resolution to proceed with applying for the 902 grant, which would help fund the new piece of equipment.
Very good. Thank you for that presentation, Herb. Are there any board comments or questions?
This, the new piece of equipment, when would that come in?
This new piece of equipment, we would just be applying for the grant this year, which then we would have to wait to make sure we got approved for it. So probably toward, right before leaf season, hopefully in 2025.
Okay. Yeah, August, September, '25.
And you'd be back before the board for permission to proceed with the purchase?
Yes, it would have to be, it will be budgeted for in 2025 also because it's a reimbursement grant. So we would have to show the revenue in the capital side with the grant covering it, and then our portion of the $19,000 we would have to cover.
Very good.
Thank you.
And you have one of these already?
We do not have one like this. We have a lot older version of this that was bought used from Upper McCongee that we do use still. What's nice about this new piece is it actually has a wedding system. We get a lot of complaints about the old style that don't have the wedding system. As you're going, you're sucking them up, they're getting all chopped up, and they blow out the top of the boxes. This has a wedding system, so that doesn't happen. If anything would come out, there's a chute on the bottom, so nothing is blowing up in the air. Also, the ones we currently have, you have to walk with also. This one is a ride-on, where you're inside of like a cage. You're well protected. No one can hit you as you're walking behind it. So it's a very efficient machine.
I support this. I just had a question. Looking at the cost of maintenance for those leaf heads, it seems like there's a jump, like in 2018, $2,000 roughly, and then 2020, it went up to 15. 2019, I missed that, $21,000. Why is there such a jump? Like, the numbers are so varied.
It all depends how much they break down while you're running them, Monica. And as they stay in the fleet, they're getting older. So every year, we have to replace all the bearings, all the belts, all the tines, all the blades that chop them up. And you know, if you're out running and someone puts a brick in the pile, which does happen, and you run that through the machine, that machine's coming back in to be rebuilt.
All right, thank you.
Any other board comments? Any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve adoption of said resolution to apply for 902 grant for the purpose of purchasing an Olympian Leaf Pro Vacuum Trailer?
I'll make a motion.
Whoops, second. We have a motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero.
Thank you.
Moving, thank you. Moving on to agenda item seven C, we have a resolution for the removal of Landscape and Shade Tree Commission Member, and I'll ask Tom Petrucci to present.
Thank you. Section 1772, the Code of Ordnances of South Whitehall Township provides for the Board of Commissioners to remove any Landscape Shade Tree Commission Member at the discretion of the Board members. So the board has a, the Landscape Shade and Tree Commission has a member who has not attended any meetings in the last year and several months. So if the board is inclined to remove this member, a resolution has been prepared for your consideration. So would respectfully request direction as to whether the board is inclined to remove the member.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. I'll open up to the board. I'm certainly in agreement with this resolution. This member was appointed October of '22 and has not attended any of the monthly meetings. So I certainly support removing this member. Other board members are in agreement?
I would add to that that we have several applicants for this commission that have shown an interest in attending the meetings. And it's a three-member board, so if members don't show up, there's no quorum. So I'm in agreement with removing this member as well.
Very good. Do I have a motion to approve adoption of said resolution for removal of the Landscape and Shade Tree Committee member?
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second. Any further discussion of the board? Any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Moving on to agenda item seven D, actually D E N F for all resolutions appointing members to some of the vacancies on our boards and committees. I just wanted to announce the Board of Commissioners interviewed 14 candidates for various boards and committees, and we're going to address three of the committees tonight. I certainly want to thank all of the residents who applied and interviewed with our board. Greatly appreciate your interest in serving. Our citizen advisory boards play a very important role in supporting our board with guidance and information and outreach to the community. So we thank you very much. I will open up the floor. Our first resolution tonight is to appoint members to the South Whitehall Township Landscape and Shade Tree Commission, and we currently have two vacancies available. If there's anyone on the board who has considered any of our applicants?
Just a quick question. They talked about moving the timeframe of that media, that commission. Is that going to happen, or are they going to keep it at 10:00 AM on a Monday?
They talked about, we were looking to move it to 5:00 PM on the fourth Monday of the month, and then the EAC would be 6:00 PM on the fourth Monday of the month.
Okay, thanks.
I would offer two names of individuals we interviewed for the two vacancies, Timothy Nash and Stacy Nash. Both work in the landscape industry and have extensive experience there. And I believe in their interviews showed a great enthusiasm for their field of work and their potential contributions to the community. I know our long-range planner, Chris Stroller, will be excited to know that Mr. Nash even offered his services to do a demo of proper tree trimming and maintenance. I know that's something we've talked about as a board, offering as a service to the residents. So unless there's any other discussion, I would make a motion to appoint Timothy Nash and Stacy Nash as members of the Landscape and Shade Tree Commission.
I'll second it.
Thank you for the motion a second. Is there further discussion of the board?
Aye, approved.
Is there any public comment? I guess my only comment, they both interviewed very well. I just, I wondered of the wisdom of having a husband and wife team on the same committee. I didn't know if the board would be amenable to consider maybe one and another, if there would be any conflict. Tom, do you have any guidance on?
So the conflict would fall under the Ethics Act. If there were such a conflict, in that case, there would have to be identifiable benefits to the two that are making a decision. In this case, it's an advisory body. So there may not be a benefit, per se. So, and I'd also turn to attorney's aid to make sure what I just said is accurate.
Under the law, excuse me, under the law, that would be absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'm comfortable moving forward with the counsel that we've been given from our manager and our solicitor. Does the board have any other input on this? Okay, so we have a motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Of appointing, of appointing Timothy Nash and Stacy Nash as members of South Whitehall Township Landscape and Shade Tree Commission. Please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. And I want to thank both of those individuals for their willingness to serve. Then to item seven E, we have a resolution appointing members to the South Whitehall Township Environmental Advisory Council. This is a new board that, well, it's an old board that had not been active for quite some time, that the township had recently revised the ordinance and, I'm sorry, the resolution for it. And we are looking to appoint candidates to this newly created council with a variety of backgrounds that will serve the council. Well, it is taking the place of the Green Advisory Council, which was active a couple of years ago. So we had several members interested in serving on this, some of them from the Green Advisory as well. Tom, did you want to just update the board on, I know that we need to stagger the terms since this is a brand-new board, which is different than the other boards we're pointing to tonight?
Correct. So the ordinance reads that the terms shall be staggered so that no more than two terms expire at the same time. So as such, if you take action to appoint five members, you'd have two terms of three years, two terms of two years, and then one term of one year. Technically, the council requires seven members. I don't believe you have seven applicants, though. So that's why we limit it to five. I'd recommend you have at least, you'd have five as opposed to four, even though four constitutes a quorum, just because it creates issues with split votes.
I would recommend, if you're opening up for
Yes.
Discussion, that maybe we do, on Tom's recommendation, appoint five, because I do believe we still have an applicant or two to interview for EAC. So that gives us the opportunity to leave two spots open to then pick among others who have interviewed and those who potentially will interview, but to not have a split vote as to appoint an odd number.
I would agree. So are we starting with the?
Can we do it one by one?
So we'll start with the three, let's start with the three-year terms. We need two candidates for the three-year terms. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion for Sarah Seiple and Marie North.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor for Sarah Seiple and Marie North to be appointed to the three-year terms on the Environmental Advisory Council. I'll make that second. Is there a board discussion?
I would just add that both Marie and Sarah have served on the Green Advisory Council. The two of them are incredibly knowledgeable and passionate about the environment, about the community. I know Marie has also participated in some of our open space workshops over the summer, has offered her advice and expertise about the work that she's done in her own home. So I think, I think both of them would be excellent fits for the three-year spots for this committee.
I would just like to add that Sarah Seiple is also on the Lehigh Valley Environmental Advisory Committee Steering Committee. So she's already increased her knowledge base and reached out to a more regional level. So yes, I would support both of them.
Very good. So we have a motion a second. If there's no further discussion, is there any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor of appointing Sarah Seiple and Marie North to the three-year terms of the South Whitehall Township Environmental Advisory Council? Please signify by saying aye. 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 Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. We'll move on to the two-year terms. I'll make this motion. I would make a motion to appoint Derek Pinkham. As a former member of Green Advisory, I feel he would be a very strong candidate on environmental advisory. Also would put forth Mark Basis to serve. He's very active with the township meetings for landscape and historical and park and rec meetings here, and very active in our community. And I think that both of those gentlemen would serve and have a lot to add respectfully to the council. Would I have a second? I would second that motion a second. Is there further discussion of the board? No. Public comment? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the appointment of Derek Pinkham and Mark Basis to the two-year terms for the South Whitehall Township Environmental Advisory Council? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Next up, we have the one-year term. Do we have a nomination?
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to nominate Frank Petroselli for the one-year term. Frank has an impressive education and career in air products, and he has also served on our Green Advisory Council in the past. So I would make a motion to nominate Frank Petroselli for the one-year term on the South Whitehall Township Environmental Advisory Council.
Very good. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion a second. Is there any board discussion? Is there any public comment? Hearing and seeing none. Do we have a comment? Oh, sorry. Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. I need a vote to appoint Frank Petroselli to the one-year term as a member of the South Whitehall Township Environmental Advisory Council. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Again, thank you for that motion. We'll move on to agenda item F. We have a resolution appointing members as alternate members of the South Whitehall Township zoning hearing board.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Glenn Gonowski. He is an attorney. He is familiar with the legalities of zoning. He has quite an extensive resume. And I especially liked his comment about listening and giving people a fair hearing and make sure that the health and the welfare are looked at before you make decisions, and also assess that after the decision is made. So.
Very good. I'll second that motion. I'll open up to the board for discussion.
I'm good with that.
Any board comment? Is there any public comment? Hearing and seeing none. Do I have a, we have a motion a second?
I'll make a motion.
We already have it. So I'm going to call for the vote to appoint Glenn Gonowski as alternate member of the South Whitehall Township zoning hearing board. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Are there any other?
I got one question, Diane. All these people you're going to contact?
Yes, the township will reach out, absolutely. Both those that were appointed and those that were not. Many who have not been appointed, who we interviewed, and we do keep all of the applications and resumes on file for one year in the event that there may be an opening.
I just want to make sure to hear it from us first before
Absolutely.
The public.
Yes. Well, they might be online listening. Few of them online. And if they are, thank you very much for tuning in tonight.
So a question there. We appoint them alternates. We're going to take it, interview members. So if a member chooses not to come back, would they have the opportunity then to become, I want to say full-fledged members, but go from alternate to a regular member?
That is an option that the board could exercise in the future.
This board or the zoning?
Our board. The appointments, whether it's alternate or full member, serving members, are the authority of the Board of Commissioners. Tom, do you have anything to add to that?
Just that it's very common for municipalities to have alternates become full-time members after they become accustomed due to the, you know, intricacies of the zoning hearing board.
Are there any other nominations this evening, or? Are there any other nominations this evening or satisfied with?
I think I'm satisfied at this point with zoning. I know we have a, we do have a full zoning hearing board right now. I think as long as we have one alternate for the time being before we have a chance to interview more applicants. It gives us a bit of a buffer in case the need arises to, to form a quorum on the zoning hearing board.
Need to nominate Diane back to the planning board?
Not tonight. No, we're not dealing with planning tonight, just.
Okay, I thought.
And as, and as a, building off of what Tommy was saying, there are several other boards where we need to re-interview inspired, which.
We'll do it at a future date.
The only reason I brought up, I know your term ran out.
Yes.
That's why.
Absolutely. Yep, that'll be at a future meeting. So we have concluded the appointments again for anyone here or online that was appointed. We thank you for your willingness to serve. For those who were not chosen, we do keep all of the resumes on file for one year for future consideration for any vacancies that occur. We thank you for your willingness to serve. Moving on to agenda item eight, motions, eight A. We have municipal campus sidewalk project. I'll again call on our Director of Township Operations, Herb Bender, to present this agenda item.
Thank you. Administration is seeking a motion to proceed with the engineering and construction of the sidewalk out front of the township building. This sidewalk will connect to Attorney Zader's sidewalk, include Atlanta bus stop along with an ADA compliant sidewalk to the Parkland Library, then continuing down towards Route 309. Once the 309 Betterman Project is completed, the sidewalk will connect from Ridgeview Drive down to the intersection of 309 and Walbert Avenue. Along with this, as you all have in your packet, is the design layout of this. Again, it's just the layout of the sidewalk that is in gray. We are going to make sure the proper signage is out there. So as people are turning in to the township building, they are aware that there is a crosswalk. We're also looking at making it like a decorative crosswalk that would stick out where it would be stamped, maybe be like a color red or something that would stand out so people would see it and be aware of it also as people are crossing there. As you see, it does move back away from Walbert Avenue, again, keeping people away from the traffic along with, instead of having to cut so many trees down, this is a path we can get in there and not have to cut a lot of those bigger trees down that are on the property. There's actually a bench out there already. The sidewalk will go very close to that bench. So if someone's out taking a walk, they could easily sit on that bench that's there also.
Excellent. Herb, thank you for presenting this this evening. I think it's a wonderful project. The connectivity to the library is certainly a bonus. I know that a lot of residents and visitors walk here between our campus and the library. I did have one question on the bus stop. I appreciate the inclusion of a bus stop. Has there been any thought? The township to approach Atlanta to potentially do a covered bus stop there?
Yes, we have met with Atlanta about three or four times already about that.
Okay.
They were also in the conversation when we chose the location for the bus stop to where the placement would work great for them, also work good where it's at to get the bus off the road so we don't restrict the lanes of traffic also, because the road has a shoulder right there also.
Excellent. Thank you, Herb.
I do have one question, Herb. What's the expected timeline on this once the engineering is completed?
What's the engineering is completed? We're looking to try to have it completed by the end of this year before we get into the colder temperatures, then we don't have to worry about putting heated blankets over the sidewalk with the concrete. So once we get approval to move forward, if everyone's good with the layout, we will contact Tony, who we've been working with at Pickcock, which has the cost evaluation also attached in the packet. Some of the work has been done already for this. The surveying and all that has been done. So it's a matter of, we got to get the plan together, get a bid spec together, pre-construction meeting, come back to advertise the approval of the bid spec and then the award, and then we can get moving right away, so.
Excellent. Any other board comments?
When you plan on meeting, done with that, Tony? I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
No, by tomorrow, no. I think assuming that we can move forward, we'll go into full design. Last year, we did a preliminary walkthrough, so that's how this layout was chosen. We have some grades in survey. So we're well on our way, I think, at this point, assuming that we can move forward. You know, we can push it through, probably get all the bid documents within a month or two. That gives 90-day bid period. So hopefully, you know, start to see this being built in October, November, again, before the weather.
Before the bad weather, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah. If you start backwards, if we can get this poured by October, November. That's a big one.
Thank you, Tony.
No problem. Thank you.
Any other board comment? Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Nothing online? Do I have a motion to approve the municipal campus sidewalk project?
So moved.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. And do I have a motion to proceed with engineering and construction for the campus sidewalk project?
Motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Herb. Don't go anywhere. I need you for eight V, a motion to proceed with purchase of Bandit Intimidator 15 XP Drum Style Chipper Force from Stevenson Equipment in the amount of $96,942.50.
Yes, Public Works is respectfully asking for a motion to proceed with ordering a Bandit Intimidator 15 XP Drum Style Chipper. Public Works solicited three quotes Stevenson Equipment, Bobcat, and Vermeer, and one being a CoStarz quote, "The current chipper is a 2001 Bandit Disc Chipper. We cannot tell how many hours are on this machine as the counter does not work. Attached are the maintenance records from 2001 forward. We cannot supply the older records as this was in the old AS400 system. This piece of equipment will stay in the fleet and be used for emergencies only, like when we had a bad rainstorm or snowstorm. Last year, we ended up renting three trippers after we had a rainstorm with high winds to be able to clean up all the downed trees and branches throughout the township. The price of this new Bandit Chipper is $96,942.50. So again, this old one would not leave. We would just put it away as a reserve. So if we have these big storms, like again this week where we just had trees come down today, we would be able to deploy two crews instead of just one to get the roads open quicker and get the township cleaned up."
Very good. Thank you, Herb. Are there any board questions on this agenda item?
These chippers are in stock already, so, yep. What would have to happen is they would have to put the strobe lights on it. So I would say a month, maybe a month and a half at the longest.
I didn't know if it was a year out or something like.
Nope, these are readily available, so.
Very good. And the, the prices within the budgeted amount for our?
Yes, this was budgeted for $100,000 in the capital reserve fund.
Very good. Any other comments from the board? Any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with said motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. And to item eight C, we have a motion to proceed with purchase of a Ford Transit 350 with specialized utility body. And Herb, if you'd present?
Thank you. Public Works Utility Division is respectfully asking for a motion to proceed with ordering a 2023 Transit 350 with a utility body. The price for this vehicle is $83,048. Public Works solicited four quotes to ensure we are getting the best price for this vehicle. The current vehicle that the van will be replacing will be staying in the fleet. It will be moved over to the Streets Department. This truck has a closed-in utility body that will allow us to get all the tools and equipment out of the weather that is stored on this vehicle. Then Truck 113 will be moved on to the mechanics due to their current vehicle being involved in an accident the other week. The insurance company have totaled the vehicle, so after looking at everything, this is the best way to replace that vehicle and correct the fleet with having to purchase only one vehicle. We are still working with the insurance companies to get the highest value for the vehicle. The range we are expecting to receive is between $11,644.08 up to $14,310. We are requesting a motion to proceed with the purchase of a Ford Transit 350 with a utility body. This is within budget, this vehicle, when we were specking them all out and doing everything, the price we were around was $110,000. The reason this van is so much cheaper, this is a pre-built van, CoStarz pricing, it's sitting on the lot. If it's approved tonight, we can pick it up Monday morning and get the mechanics back into a truck. So if we have a road call, they are ready, equipped, and ready to go.
Very good. Thank you, Herb. I'll open up to the board for any comments or questions.
So the fleet isn't growing, it's just taken the place of the mechanic trucks that was told in the accident?
Correct.
And this was already budgeted for 80, $100,000?
Yes.
And part of the cost would be offset by the insurance money from the accident?
Yes, whatever insurance money comes, since we're moving a water truck over to the general service, that insurance check will be deposited back into the Water Fund Capital Reserve Fund.
Okay.
Any other board comments? Public comment on this agenda item? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with said motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. And to item eight D, we have a motion to award bid number 2024-04 roadway asphalt milling project to Rota Mill Incorporated in the amount of $140,944. And Herb, if you'd present?
Sure. Three bids were received and opened on Monday, March 25th, 2024, for the roadway asphalt milling bid. This bid was advertised once in local publication as required by law. Thirty potential bidders downloaded and received bid documents from the PennBid website. This bid was approved for advertisement by the Board of Commissioners at the March 6, 2024 meeting for the yearly roadway resurfacing schedule for various roads within the township. The action we are requesting is Rota Mill has been awarded previous contracts for roadway milling, and the township has been satisfied with their performance. Therefore, we are requesting the board award the contract to Rota Mill Incorporated for a total of $140,944, well below the 24 budget line. Just so everyone knows, this was budgeted for $177,519, coming in again at $140,944. Just so you do see, when we did budget the $177,000, so we didn't have the same mistake with UGI. We met with them two or three times. They did not get to a road last year. They're going to get there this year. So we removed that before we put the bid spec out. So there was almost 4,500 square yards removed because of not having to mill that road also.
Very good. Good planning, Herb. Thank you. It's always good when the bid comes in well under budget. Good news for the township. Are there any comments or questions?
So does this, the milling, UGI is going to dig up some roads that we just paved? Is this milling for, to repair those roads that they're digging up?
No, they will just be digging those this year. Those will be in the cost share for this year to be milled next year, yes.
Any other comments from the board? Any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Herb. Then to item nine, Correspondents and Information Boards and Commissions, Tom, if you would review?
Okay, so upcoming meetings and events are as follows. Monday, April 8th, 7:00 PM is Park and Recs, Parks and Recreation Board. Tuesday, April 9th, 6:00 PM is the Crime Watch Meeting. Wednesday, April 10th, 10:00 AM is the Civil Service Commission Meeting. Thursday, April 11th, 7:00 PM is the Planning Commission Meeting. Saturday, April 13th, 9:00 AM is the annual youth fishing derby at Cover Bridge Park. And Wednesday, April 17th, 7:00 PM, Board of Commissioners. All details of the meetings are posted on the township website.
Very good. Thank you.
Crime Watch, is that meeting being held here now?
That is my understanding, yes.
Very good. Moving on, we have no, I'm sorry, direction, discussion, feasibility assessment and concept plan development for Jordan Creek at Cover Bridge Park. And Tom, if you'd please present this agenda item.
Thank you. So Township Management has observed repeated instances of flooding and scouring along the Jordan Creek at Cover Bridge Park. Upon review of the 2013-2014 Cover Bridge Park Master Site Plan, the proposed current and future amenities were built around the concept of remediating the environmental and flooding concerns related to the Jordan Creek. As the park has been developed over time, the environmental and hydrogeological issues have not been rectified, and the flooding and scouring issues have continued. Township Management has determined is in the best interest of the township to evaluate potential options for the long-term environmental remediation of the Jordan Creek, both upstream and downstream of the Cover Bridge Park Weir's Dam area with the broadly defined goal of improving the stream morphology. As such, I did obtain a professional services proposal from the environmental services firm Land Studies to conduct a feasibility assessment and concept plan development for the Jordan Creek at Cover Bridge Park in the amount of $9,900. Land Studies is an environmental firm based in Lititz, PA that has extensive background and experience in working with municipalities on environmental issues and ecological plans. Their, their staff has the appropriate certifications and experience to assist the township with this project. So there's some key factors I wanted to review with the board. The overall intent of this is to identify options for environmental remediation in the identified study area based on the existing layout and configuration of Cover Bridge Park. It's important to note that this study is a starting point to help give the township options to consider for future study and remediation options. The proposal is not for complete hydrologic and hydraulic study. However, the scope of work of this proposal will confirm whether it would be recommended to conduct a full H&amp;H study as, as an option. So the study's not necessarily a panacea for all of the identified issues at Cover Bridge Park. It's a starting point for the township, including management and the governing body to evaluate future potential remediation options. So for this evening, I'm not asking for any official action. Listening, listed it under direction discussion to receive feedback and comment from the Board of Commissioners as to whether or not the governing body is inclined to proceed with the project as defined in the proposal. So I'd come back to another meeting for formal action. This money would be available in the general fund under Community Development Consulting Services. So there would be room in the budget to approve it. But first, wanted to get your feedback.
Very good. Tom, thank you for presenting this to the board tonight. I certainly feel it's important information for the township to gather as we've had to work through significant flooding several times over the last couple of years, specifically. One question I have, I know that the Cover Bridge Arc Plan was done in '12 or '13, and I don't believe that we've ever reopened it to do a refresh every few years. Is that something moving forward that the township can address as we do with the comp plan to kind of keep an eye on it to see if the direction needs to change as we move down these paths?
Yes, that is the intent, and this would be the first step of that process. So we need to understand what options are available to improve the stream morphology first before engaging in further development of the site.
So at this point, plans to do any further development there is on hold if we go this path?
Yes, I mean, ultimately, that would be the recommendation. Of course, that's the Board of Commissioner's final decision, but that would be the recommendation from management, yes.
Very good. Thank you. I'll open up to the board for comment. Others?
It's overdue.
Agreed.
Something about the flooding.
Very good.
I'll take that as a yes.
I believe it's a unanimous yes.
Okay, I'll put that on the next agenda for approval then.
Very good.
Thank you.
We have no old business. Agenda item 12 is courtesy of the floor. Again, another opportunity for any member of the public to address the board on any non-agenda items. Is there anyone here? Yes, sir. Please come forward, turn on the microphone, yes, and give us your name and address for the record.
I'm Don Cheesely, 1411 Hampton Road. My only question is, is comment, is that when we talked about the digital sign, which you think I'm annoying about, it's supposed to be linked with the sidewalk changes? That's what we were told by Quinn. So maybe we could look at it again.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comment.
I mean, I like the one that Randy has in North White Hill. We should have one Lisa goes for Randy.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present who'd like to address the board? Is there anyone online? Hey, very good. Hearing and seeing none. Agenda item 13, I need a motion to authorize payment of invoices and disbursements. So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We have no executive session. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This motion is adjourned. Thank you.